We're about to begin. We'll call this public hearing to order. This is a public hearing conducted by the Judiciary Committee of the House of Delegates to consider House Bill 4145 and to solicit input from members of the public who wish to address that bill. Should remind you that this is streaming audio and video, so please conform your conduct accordingly. If we have a total of 13 people that have signed up to speak, and based on the amount of time we have available and hopefully allowing a little time for questions, we'll allow each person to speak up to four minutes. Please note that there is a red light at the podium, and when that red light comes on, that indicates your time is up. So please wrap up your comments shortly thereafter. Give yourself a few seconds to wrap up. If you go on beyond that too far, we're likely to turn your microphone off and you'll be speaking to no one. If you have written materials that you'd like the committee to consider, please bring them up and either give them to the clerk on the second to my left or my, our committee executive assistant who's to my right, and those materials will be copied and submitted to our committee when we take up this bill later this afternoon, or later this morning. We're going to call individuals two at a time. First person will be our speaker, the second person will be on deck, so to speak, and we do that in order to kind of keep things moving along. So I'll call the first speaker, and I'll also say to be followed by, and that's if your name's next, please come up and either take a seat right up close or stand by the door so you can get to the podium fairly quickly. We ask that you refrain from any personal comments or attacks, and try to keep your comments directed to the issues of the bill. We also ask that there be no displays of approval or disapproval, cheers or jeers or anything of that sort. We do have, we do have security here and hopefully won't have to utilize them, but if things get out of hand, we certainly won't hesitate to ask security to escort you from the chambers. We also ask that you remain after you speak in the room in case there's members of our committee that have questions they'd like to ask you, or perhaps even after the hearing is adjourned, they may want to take you aside and ask you some questions. The copies of the bills that were, the bill that we're being considered is available up front. Keep in mind, though, that during the committee session, sometimes bills are, there are corrections or additions made to the bills, and the final bill may or may not be exactly like the one that's being, that's been proposed. All right, our first speaker today will be Keith Morgan. Mr. Morgan, you come to the podium, and you're going to be followed by Zach Lauten-Silliger. I'm sorry, I'm not sure I can pronounce that, but you can introduce yourself when you get up here, please. Mr. Morgan, whenever you're ready to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm going to give you guys a preview of what you're going to hear today. You're going to hear some general arguments about why people shouldn't have guns. You'll probably hear some horror stories like last year about prohibited persons doing terrible things. And by prohibited persons, we mean people who it's already illegal for them to have firearms. We had that last year. But none of that matters for purposes of this bill. This bill's not about who should or who should not have guns, and it doesn't change Last year, there was one person that spoke in this chamber that I think spoke honestly and spoke with integrity, and that was the lady from the Courthouse Improvement Fund. And she stood at this podium and said, yes, it absolutely is about the money. And we appreciate that. Rest of, rest of the stuff you're probably going to hear today are going to be some variation of five basic lies. The first lie is officer safety. The claim that constitutional carry will degrade officer safety. Well, every officer in this state is trained that every contact with the public, that person is an armed threat until proven otherwise. Constitutional carry will not affect the way they do business in any way. The second lie we'll hear, drug dealers will get guns, domestic abusers will get guns. Again, that's a lie. This bill has nothing to do with who's allowed or not allowed to have firearms. The next lie you'll hear is we've got to have training. Training requirements save lives. Except Federal Center for Disease Control mortality injury statistics prove that states with no training requirement are no more or less safe than states with no training requirement. Another lie you may hear today is, hey, we're doing away with permits, we're going to lose reciprocity. Absolutely not true. Our permits will still exist, and people who want to take advantage of reciprocity agreements can still obtain a permit in carrying in reciprocal states. And the fifth lie that you'll probably hear is that, hey, you can just open carry if they don't want to get a permit. Well, a member of our Board of Directors was arrested, harassed, and wheeling, won his lawsuit while, just because he was open, open carrying. We've got members throughout the state who've reported that law enforcement, they have to respond to the call because somebody's openly carrying a gun, somebody freaks out, calls law enforcement, they get harassed. We don't fault law enforcement for that, we fought a skittish public. So, open carry is not fine. It does cause a problem, it could make you a target. Tactically, it's not, not quite as sound as concealed carry. This bill's not about what its opponents are going to say it's about. This bill's about sheriffs taking our rights from us and selling them back to us. It's about charging us $100 tax to put on a coat on a cold day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. One reminder I failed to mention before, because this is video streamed, you can, you can certainly download this information or this, the video of this online, but we do have rules here in the chamber that prohibit photography or taking videos. So, can I ask our security to keep an eye on that? So please, if you're taking a video now, or you're trying to take a camera or pictures, please put that away. You can access this information or this data online at a later time. Our second speaker is Zach Lauten-Silliger, and I apologize if I've, if I've mispronounced that. Please identify yourself, and if you're affiliated with any particular group, please identify the group, and you will be followed by Dee Price. Dee Price, please begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Zach Lauten-Schlogger, and I represent the National Association for Gun Rights and our 4 million members nationwide. I also represent, obviously, within the state of West Virginia. Our 50,000 members in West Virginia strongly support this bill and urge your support of constitutional carry. I will try not to repeat any of the good points that Mr. Morgan has just made. I will stress that this legislation allows a person to carry a firearm if they are already legally able to possess it. Does not change what constitutes legal possession, does not change whether or not a person can legally own a firearm. It does reiterate that if you are legally able to possess that firearm under the Constitution in the Second Amendment, you are able to possess it. Now, our members are obviously strongly in support of this legislation, and the Chairman at Arms will be delivering over 3,000 petitions that were signed by just a few of our members to your offices today, and we appreciate that. Thank you, sir. I do want to stress that our membership supports the constitutional carry bill as it is written and as it is before you today. We strongly oppose any amendments, and we will be carefully tracking and scoring votes on those amendments. Votes against constitutional carry in the form of votes for amendments that we oppose will be scored as anti-gun votes. And with that, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your input, sir. A Dee Price, be followed by Brandon Tenney or Tony, I'm not sure which that is. Ms. Price?
I do have handouts, I can.
Okay, you can follow them with the clerk here.
Chairman Shaw, members of the committee, my name is Dee Price Childers. I'm a West Virginian, a mother, a voter, an attorney, and I'm the West Virginia Chapter Leader of Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. Moms Demand Action has about three and a half million grassroots supporters across the country, of which over 7,700 are West Virginians. I'm here today to express our deep concerns with House Bill 4145, a bill that seeks to eliminate the core safety standards, some core safety standards, when it comes to who is allowed to carry concealed loaded guns in public. House Bill 4145 would dismantle West Virginia's two-pronged concealed carry permitting system. First, repealing our permit system would eliminate training requirements in favor of letting people who have not been trained on how to handle and fire a gun readily carry a concealed loaded gun in public. Second, House Bill 4145 would strip law enforcement of its ability to ensure that anyone who seeks to carry a concealed loaded gun first undergo and pass a background check, making sure that they have a clean criminal record. In turn, this means people who do not know how to handle a loaded gun, even those with criminal records, would be able to carry a concealed loaded gun in a space and places we share with friends, families, our children, and grandchildren. Clearly, there's nothing reasonable or even necessary about this approach. When it's coupled with this legislature's separate attempt to mandate that guns be allowed on college and university campuses, precisely what House Bill 2466 seeks to do, House Bill 4145 becomes substantially more alarming. Demonstrating just how far astray from our ideals, House Bill 4145 is, a March 2015 national poll showed that nearly 90% of Americans believe one should get a permit before carrying a concealed handgun in public. Similarly, a 2015 bipartisan poll of our very own state residents showed that 83% of West Virginians support our current permitting requirements, including 81% of the gun owners polled, and these are shown in the handouts that I've just handed you. Undoubtedly, House Bill 4145 does not represent the will of most West Virginians. In closing, just as last year, when our, our sound, reasonable, and well-supported permitting process came under attack, House Bill 4145 also amounts to little more than a solution looking for a problem. In fact, we should be proud of our current system. I urge you, therefore, to align yourselves with nearly 90% of Americans and 83% of West Virginians who support concealed carry permitting requirements, and in doing so, reject House Bill 4145's attempt to dismantle key public safety standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Brendan Tenney, followed by Amber Perry.
Hello, my name is Brandon Tenney, and I'm here not to lie to you, I promise. I'm a proud concealed carry permit holder. I happily pay the fee to know that my fellow West Virginians have had the course and been taught all the safety regulations. I grew up in Richwood, West Virginia. If you don't know where that is, you hunt, you fish, those are the things you do. Growing up hunting, I didn't learn the things it takes to properly carry my concealed carry handgun, and through my class, I did learn those things. Not every West Virginian grows up responsibly, and I would hope that everyone would support that who is carrying a gun is doing it responsibly. I don't know of anything mentally at 21 that automatically teaches you how to carry a gun properly. I don't, I've never heard any research that when you turn 21, you learn gun laws automatically. I'm also here to support our law enforcement officers. If they say it's not the right thing, I'm with them. And, and finally, if our forefathers wanted us to, to carry these guns, I am for carrying without a permit if you want to carry a single-shot black powder musket, I am for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenney. Amber Perry, followed by Patty Hamilton.
My name is Amber Perry. I am terrified, so I'm just going to read what I wrote so that I don't get off in the weeds somewhere, but I'm here from Mason County, I'm a mother of five, many of you know me, and I don't think anybody would question my mothering or my dedication to my children. My first two points aren't in my notes, but there is no repeal of the permitting system. That is a blatant lie. The permitting system stays intact. And the second item is that if you're prohibited from carrying a gun today, you're still going to be prohibited when this bill is law. I took the time out of my day today to come here to represent the women who are not able to be here. In this debate, it seems like women are included in only two ways, as victims and as statistics, and that is not at all what I see. What I see is that women are the fastest-growing demographic in the firearms and self-defense community. Women are part of the firearms community, and we are here to stay. I am here to represent the aunts, the sisters, the mothers, the grandmothers, and the friends who could not make it today. I personally know many of these women in each of those categories, and they are active in learning to protect themselves. And I am here today to put a face on the many mothers of West Virginia who wanted to be here, who could not find a sitter for their children to take time to be here. I'm here to represent my female friends who teach firearms safety classes on weekends to women who are eager to learn the facts and the truth about their ability to protect their own bodies. Those classes are always full, and they will continue to be full after this bill is law, not because you say that they must, but because women are smart, and women understand the value of training just as many of you, they will seek it out, just as I did. I am here to represent the single mother who is working right now in order to keep food on the table and the heat on. I am here for the woman who has walked away from an abuser with nothing but the clothes on her back. Do these women not have the right to keep and bear arms because they can't afford an official sanctioned class and permit fees? Where would you have them take that money from? From the grocery budget or from the heating bill? This bill applies only to law-abiding citizens. All it does is remove the crime of putting on a coat without first paying to lease your right to protect yourself for five years. I am here for my daughters. I am here because I appreciate that my government has recognized and enumerated at the federal and the state level my basic human right to protect my own body, and I do not believe it is right that it is rented back to me if I want to wear a coat while doing so. I thank you for your time. I hope that my words sink in, because women are here and we are on this side of the debate, and we are not going away, because we understand that we have a right to protect our own bodies, and we're not about to give it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Patty Hamilton, followed by Kathy Kraus.
Good morning. I'm Patty Hamilton, Executive Director of the West Virginia Association of Counties, which represents West Virginia's elected county officials, including commissioners, sheriffs, prosecuting attorneys, county clerks, circuit clerks, and assessors. We are opposed to House Bill 4145. Our primary message to you is that the bill is fixing a process that isn't broken. Our concealed weapons permit process works. Our citizens are not complaining about it. Training and background checks have strong public support, and it works for our law enforcement, and we support our law enforcement. We fully understand that this bill does not repeal the process, but it certainly does make it unnecessary. Last year, we were told that we would be joining four other states that currently allow permitless concealed carry. Since then, at least one other, Kansas, has been added to that list. If the bill becomes law, we would still be joining a very small minority of states. Other states have successfully defeated similar bills, including Alabama, Iowa, and Tennessee. We did some research last year and found that three of the four states, Arizona, Alaska, and Wyoming, do have some restrictions. For example, Alaska and Arizona and Wyoming require a person to be 21. Currently in West Virginia, a person must be 21 to get concealed carry permit. This bill would allow 18- to 20-year-olds to obtain a permit and carry a concealed weapon, and then after age 21, no permit would be required. This bill would allow non-residents to come into West Virginia carrying a concealed weapon. They would not have to have a permit. Wyoming requires a person to be a resident. Non-residents must have a concealed carry permit from their state of residence, and that, that Wyoming recognizes reciprocity. These statutes in other states have standards for interactions with law enforcement. For example, in Arizona, it is an offense to fail to accurately respond to law enforcement if the officer asks whether the person is carrying a concealed deadly weapon. In Alaska, a person must obtain the express permission of an adult residing in a home before the person brings a concealed deadly weapon within that person's residence. None of these safeguards are in this bill. Those who obtain a concealed carry weapons permit have met a minimum training standard. They have passed a background check. This bill means no training, no background check. Any person with absolutely no idea how to use a gun can conceal a firearm. With every right comes responsibility. We have a right to vote, but we have to register. We have the privilege of driving a car, but we have a rather lengthy licensing process. We think the concealed weapons process permit works. Training and background checks are not obstacles, they are safeguards for the public and for law enforcement. These requirements do have strong public support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Kathy Kraus, followed by Dakota Moore.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Hess Kraus. I was not prepared to speak today, so please bear with me on this. I live in Buffalo Putnam County. I was born and raised in Charleston. I'm a mom of five, one of which of those serves our country. I'm a member of West Virginia CDL. We're a homeschool family, two of which are here getting their civics lessons for today. I am a concealed carry permit holder, and I am tired of being depicted as weak, inept, and unable to protect myself and my family. Most of all, I'm tired of having to pay to put on a coat or a long shirt to cover up the gun in which I'm carrying legally. This bill does not change who can carry that gun. It just says we can cover it up if we want to, or throw on our kid's backpack and accidentally cover it up, or carry their coats or the numerous other things they have. I support constitutional carry with all my heart. I've looked into it, I've seen all the debates, I've talked to many people. I want other moms to be able to protect their families without having to put undue hardships on their families, taking the money away from bills, away from food, away from classes that their kids are taking outside of public school system, or if they're homeschooling, because those families are ones who are working usually on a budget of one and not two parents. I also don't want you to think that our kids are going to be unsafe because we're carrying around them. My kid's teacher and principal carries daily, and I can, I can say without a doubt that they are safe and protected, and this bill is not going to change that either. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Dakota Moore, followed by Melissa Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Dakota Moore. I'm here today on behalf of the National Rifle Association to testify in support of House Bill 4145. I do not want to belabor the things that have already been stated. I believe that those individuals who've come up and testified in support of this legislation have been accurate in that what this bill amounts to is the elimination of attacks on a fundamental right to self-defense. Instead of talking about the nuances of the bill, I would like to talk about the practical effect of this legislation in the state of West Virginia. I have the pleasure of lobbying states all across this country, including two states that currently have permitless carry. I've seen the same arguments arise in each of those states as this legislation was being debated. I've seen the legislation pass, and I've seen none of the arguments against the legislation ever come to fruition. This is about money, quite simply. The sheriffs, they hate to relinquish the fees that they, they accept in exchange for your ability to exercise fundamental right to self-defense. And practically speaking, how the process work, if anybody wants to get into the legalities of it, especially with regard to some of the law enforcement arguments, is a permit acts as an affirmative defense for your ability to carry a concealed weapon. So the law says you cannot carry a concealed weapon unless you have this permit. Showing the permit itself actually proves that you are not one of the prohibited persons. All of this legislation does is flip the point in which you show that you're not a prohibited person. With technology as it currently exists, there's not a single law enforcement officer in the state, I would imagine, that doesn't have nearly immediate access to an NCIC or triple I system. That means that if the situation arose, an individual's pulled over, and they are in possession of a concealed weapon, the individual, the law enforcement officer wants to ensure that they are in compliance with state law, as it becomes, hopefully after 4145 is enacted into law, in law. All he has to do is go to his computer database, type in the individual's name, ensure that he's not a prohibited person. It works the same way right now. All CPLs, all concealed weapons licensed are confirmed, confirm the validity of, so the same check takes place anyway. With regard to the training requirement, I know there's been much debate about this, and it actually has been something that's been recognized in developing this new version of permitless carry. The new version of permitless carry, as was correctly stated, does permit an individual who's between the ages of 18 and 20 to obtain a permit, the same training requirements apply. An individual who sat up here earlier and said that there is no magical age in which a person automatically become, has the ability to, or the cognizance to know how to use a firearm safely, well, you're absolutely right. There is no finite number, there is no, no age in which an individual does learn that, that information safely. However, we are incentivizing the, the development of firearm safety techniques by allowing these 18- to 20-year-olds to be able to obtain a permit if they undergo the training. I think a lot of people in this room have stated that they have a concealed weapons license, they like to avail themselves of the privileges that that license has, and if you want to, if you want to exercise that right between the ages of 18 and 20, 21, then you should be able to do so. You undergo the training, these individuals become permitless carriers, and they will be trained individuals and able to avail themselves of the right of carrying a concealed weapon without a permit, without that government taxation of that fundamental right. In closing, I would just like to say that the National Rifle Association, Institute of Legislative Action, has taken a strong position on permitless carry. We've seen this, this legislation come to fruition in eight states, and we hope West Virginia will be the night. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman, and I will stand for any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. If you'll stick around, we may have some questions after all the presentations are Melissa Smith, followed by Katie Fuller.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name's Melissa Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority, and I come to you today not ashamed at what we use the fee for, but I'm very honored to be able to share our story with you. 14 years ago, the legislature placed the preservation of our 55 county courthouses as a priority, and when they did that, they implemented small fees. One of those fees is $15 from the, the sale of a concealed carry permit. $15, while it's not very much to us individually, when we put them together, we have done great things. Just like my softball coach used to tell me, there is no I in team. Working together, we can accomplish so much more, and that is what we've done with our $15 fee. On the, on the year, annually, we bring in about $400,000 from the $15. This would be a loss to our budget. However, I am our only employee, and none of the money that we send to counties can be used for county employees. All of that money directly impacts your local economy. Each of our grants has a match also, so it would not only be $400,000, it would be quite a bit more. In a time when the loss of jobs and therefore job creation should be our most pressing issue for this legislature, this bill will only hurt private companies. As an example, just recently, we've sent about $70,000 to Daniel's Electric in Boone County, Casto Technical, about $120,000 in Calhoun County. We replaced the roof on the Grant County Courthouse. We replaced the roof on the Grant County Courthouse. WQ Waters in Canal County redid the ceiling in their historic courtroom. Those are some of the businesses that have directly been impacted from our grant funds. While that may not sound like a lot to you, it will be a devastating effect to our already struggling county budgets. Some of the counties couldn't even apply this year because they didn't have the extra 20% match in their budget. As a citizen of this state, I feel it is our responsibility to maintain our courthouses. If we don't, who is going to? We'll be right back where the legislature felt we were 15 years ago. The counties were struggling to maintain these historic structures, and our economy was much better at that time than it is now. So to you, it's $15, but to Berkeley County, it's the replacement of their cornice and their cupola. To Boone County, it's the replacement of their roof around their bell tower. $15 turns into a roof for the Hampshire County Courthouse, the new lighting in the Mason County Courthouse. We may have even helped pay your salary or that of a family member or friend. I urge a no vote to House Bill 4145.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Katie Fuller, followed by Herbert Morano. I'm sorry, that's Albert Morano. Go ahead, Ms. Fuller.
Good morning. My name is Katie Fuller. I have, I am a mother of a homeschool student and an NRA certified range safety officer. I am also one of a large and still growing group of West Virginia women who are accepting the responsibility of protecting themselves and their loved ones from the dangers of a declining society. The need for a right to carry without a permit is great for West Virginia women. The fear and reality of assault against women is higher now than ever. Currently, we are able to openly carry without a permit, but we deserve the right to defend ourselves without making others uncomfortable or advertising that we are carrying a firearm. For a lot of us women, especially single mothers, widows, or those on a fixed income, it is very difficult to afford the added expense of the permit. As a certified NRA range safety officer, I assist in firearms classes for mostly women to feel comfortable and competent with using their firearms. I see women on a weekly basis who are eager to learn about safe handling and protecting their families. I also see the same women discouraged, knowing they have done all of this out of love but are unable to because they can't pay for the permit. This should not be. We will continue to hear certain groups saying we need less guns, not more, and they will have statistics and tragic stories of gun crimes to sway you emotionally, but I tell you, the statistics would be lower and the violent crimes fewer if you had more moms with guns. Owning firearms in West Virginia is a part of our great state heritage. We women have our guns, whether we bought one ourselves, it was given to us as a gift, or we inherited them from a loved one passed on. So I tell you, delegates of this state of West Virginia, we women have our guns. You make it possible for us to use them for the protection of our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Albert Morano, followed by Keith Cart.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the, and committee appreciate the ability and time for us to speak. I'm Albert Morano with the West Virginia Deputy, I'm sorry, Sheriff's Association. I used to be a deputy sheriff. You know, I just want to say that sheriffs are not anti-gun, and we're not against the Second Amendment. We support the Constitution of West Virginia and the United States Constitution. We protect it every day. We believe West Virginia citizens should have the ability to own firearms and carry firearms. Sheriffs also support responsible firearm handling, and we support training. We think that is a very important part of carrying a firearm is training. We have produced a written policy statement, and would like to provide that to the chair and the committee, and we would like you to consider that when you're looking over this legislation. We ask the committee and the House, when they are addressing this legislation, to consider public safety and also officer safety. As you know, we're in a different environment than we were 50 years ago. Things are much more dangerous, especially for police officers out there. And with that, I'd like to say we thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration. And I would like to drop this off to the clerk. Thank you.
We thank you for your input and for your service. Thank you. Our final presenter is Keith Cart. Mr. Cart.
Good morning. My name is Keith Cart, and I'm here to represent the poor people of the state of West Virginia. And I agree with the law enforcement officer that was just here. Times are a little more dangerous, not just for law enforcement officers, but for me and my wife. I can't afford to pay the money for permits. This country was founded on the premise that all men are created equal. The rights that are enumerated in our Constitution are not reserved to those who can afford a permit. I can't walk on the streets of Charleston without being approached by somebody trying to con me out of money. I don't go to Charleston anymore. I don't go to places because I'm not safe. When I can scrape together enough money for a permit, my wife comes up with a way to spend it on something else. I'll never get one. I had one at one time. When it came time to renew it, I couldn't afford it. It expired. If you vote to stop this bill, then you're going to have to look me dead in the eye and tell me I'm a criminal, and I don't know how to operate a firearm, and that my safety is not important, or my wife's safety is not important. I'll never be able to carry concealed again for the rest of my life if this bill doesn't go through. I've never committed a crime. I've had a firearm since I was five years old. Never hurt anybody. I've taught my child gun safety since he was three years old. If training is a problem, we need to start training our kids better. Put it back in the high schools. Put it back in the junior highs. Why don't we? It's irresponsible not to. This state's full of guns. Let's teach firearms safety. Please, you have to pass this bill. I want to be safe. I want to be able to go out. I want to be able to protect my family, and now my wife wants to be able to do that also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cart. That concludes the presentations by those who signed up. Members of our committee, we've asked the presenters to remain around for questions. Do any members of the Judiciary Committee have questions you wish to address to any particular member of the presenters? And if you will, give us a chance to get that person, identify who it is, delegate fast, if you would, identify who you wish to address the question to, and we'll ask them to come back to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to address a question to the gentleman from the NRA.
Mr. Moore, could you return to the podium, please?
Sir, my question is, is there any data or information that you could share regarding the ratio of open, constitutional carry and increase or decrease in gun violence in those states?
Yes, delegate. There is information. We do, we have compiled data on crime statistics following enactment of permitless carry legislation in the various states. The latest two, Kansas and Maine, we would not have accurate statistics for those two states, given the recency in which they were enacted. I can provide this chamber with analysis of the states that have had it for a significant period of time. Vermont, obviously, has had it for the longest amount of time. It is the basis of a Supreme Court decision in which the court interpreted the Second Amendment and Vermont's variation thereof as not permitting the government to enforce concealed carry laws. So that would obviously be the longest. Obviously, Alaska, Arizona, Wyoming have also had it for a very extended period of time, and I'll be more than happy to provide you with those statistics that show no measurable increase in crime, violent crime, since the enactment. And obviously, those statistics trend downwards in, are consistent with the national crime trends that we've seen over the past 20 years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. While Mr. Moore is at the podium, are there any members of the Judiciary Committee which wish to ask Mr. Moore follow-up questions? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any members of the Judiciary Committee which wish to ask any of the other presenters questions? Delegate Folk, would you identify who you wish to question?
Yes, I'd like to see if I could ask Ms. Price a question.
All right. Did you say Ms. Price?
Yes, please. If she would.
Ms. Price, would you return to the podium, please?
Thank you for showing up today. What gave you the idea that this bill, or even last year's bill, would repeal the concealed carry permitting process in West Virginia?
The requirement that you have to have a permit to carry concealed is what we're saying would be repealed.
Well, you said it would repeal. The way your comments were written, at least the way I heard them, says it would repeal the permit process.
No, no, we understand that would repeal the requirement that to carry concealed, you have to have a permit as it currently exists, which the permit, of course, entails training and a background check.
Now, do you realize that there are already people carrying concealed in this state without a requirement for training?
That they're carrying concealed with the permit and didn't have?
Yes, without training, that's correct.
Who would?
Anybody that has a concealed.
Are you talking about concealed, not open carry?
No, I'm talking about concealed. If I had a gun right here and my jacket's covering it, there are currently people that are allowed to carry in this state without training requirements. Because they, because, and I'll explain mine, then maybe you can understand it. It's because we have reciprocity with states that do not require training.
Yeah. My understanding is that in West Virginia, if you're a West Virginia resident, to carry a concealed weapon, there's a background check.
But if you live in Pennsylvania or Ohio, which do not require training, they have reciprocities with West Virginia, and they are right next to us. So obviously, some of those people in the northern panhandle and all along the Ohio River cross over, and they can carry because they have concealed carry permits in those states which do not require training. You were not aware of that, were you?
No, the other residents, I mean, I don't know how that pertains to what I testified about.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Let me just see if anyone else has questions for you while you're, Ms. Price? While you're on the hot seat, let me see if anybody else has questions for you. Are there any other delegates that have questions for Ms. Price while we have her up here? If not, thank you very much. Are there any other of our members of our committee which has questions? Yes. Could you identify who the question is for, please, delegate? Mr. Morgan, if you'd please return to the podium. Delegate Dasinger has a question for you, or more than one, perhaps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Morgan, are there, how many other states currently have constitutional carry?
I believe the total number nationwide now is up to eight.
Eight? And do any of these states that have constitutional carry, do they have, do any of them not have training requirements, or do they all have training requirements?
It's my understanding that there's no training requirement in any state that has constitutional carry. And in discussions with leadership and other interested parties, to include the Sheriff's Association, we actually looked pretty hard for a way to allow training requirements to be involved, but it all broke down at the practicality test. When an officer is beside the road and has someone stopped, and they're carrying, and they're carrying under constitutional carry, how do they verify that somebody's had training unless you do licensure? So it, and when you break it down from a practicality perspective, it's really either you have a license, or you require a license, or you do not require a license.
How about these states that don't? Are there any issues with these states that you know of?
We did an analysis. We went, and this data is available everywhere to everybody. The federal CDC keeps injury mortality statistics, and we did an analysis of states, including some constitutional carry states, that do not require training. And we looked at the injury mortality rate with handguns, and we excluded crimes and so forth. So what we're looking for is the concern that every untrained yahoo with a gun's going to be shooting up Main Street. And what we found was that there was absolutely no discernible or statistical difference between a state like West Virginia with a training requirement, or a state like Indiana that does not have it, or Arizona. So the training requirement, what we found, and this is, again, using federal statistics, served no public safety interest at all.
Gun people tend to be responsible by nature, don't they?
Well, I like to think I'm an optimist at heart when I think about the American people, and I think that the American people tend to be responsible at heart.
Just one last, one last question. Does this amount essentially to a tax on a constitutional right?
Well, we certainly view, we certainly view the right to self-defense as an inherent human right. It's recognized in the Constitution of the United States, and it is even more strongly recognized in our state constitution, which literally uses the phrase "defensive self." And I think that it's arguable that the intent of our constitution certainly includes self-defense, and this concealed carry of firearms is the modern methodology, the effective way to defend yourself against violent attackers.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, delegate. While we have Mr. Morgan at the podium, does anyone else, any of our other delegates have questions of Mr. Morgan? Delegate Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Morgan, you're saying that it's a constitutional right to citizens of the United States and to citizens of West Virginia to carry concealed weapons. Is that correct?
The, what I'm stating is that self-defense is inherently enshrined in our Constitution, state and federal, yes.
Okay, and can you show me in the U.S. Constitution or in the West Virginia Constitution where a citizen between the ages of 18 and 21 is not a, does not have that right?
I can see nothing in the state or federal Constitution that says that a citizen should be denied any fundamental right enshrined in the Bill of Rights.
So if people are putting forth the argument that it's a constitutional right to carry a concealed weapon for self-defense, then that should be for anyone, is that correct?
Anyone who we have not, under our current code of laws, determined is not a prohibited person.
And if you was between 18 and 21, and you was not prohibited person, you should have that right as well as someone 40 years old?
I believe so, yes. Somebody who's 18 years old, if they're a male, they have to register for selective service. They can go fight and die and bleed for our country. They should have the right to fight, die, and bleed for their own self-defense, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Other questions for Mr. Morgan by members of the Judiciary Committee? Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of our committee which wish to question any of the presenters? Delegate Schaefer, will you identify who you wish to question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. His name was Keith. He was the last speaker. Didn't catch his last name.
Mr. Cart, would you come forward, please? Delegate Schaefer has a question for you.
Yes. You had stated that you were afraid to go to Charleston for some kind of reason. Could you restate that for me?
Well, I, it seems like every time I'm on the street in Charleston, on Capitol Street, Virginia Street was the last occurrence, someone approaches me and tries to con me out of money. Usually, it's a large male person, and I just don't go down there anymore. It really angers me. See, I think it frightens me, but it just makes me mad. See, I think it frightens me, but it just makes me mad. And I, they're, they're, they're pulling some con, like their car's broken down and they just need $20, and you're going to pull your billfold out and that's going to be the last you see of it. For firearms. They don't care. The criminals and the bad guys, they're carrying guns anyway. They're not paying any attention to any of these permits. This has no effect on the criminals or the bad guys. All this bill does is level the playing field so the people that can't afford a permit can defend themselves when they're approached by people and feel safe, and maybe I can go out on the streets of Charleston and Huntington and Wheeling and wherever and feel safe in my own community like I used to be.
Okay, and I didn't want to interrupt you there. My next question is, is how, you already have the right to carry open and along the streets of Charleston, is that correct?
Right.
So how is permitting you to put a gun inside of your coat going to help you walk down the streets of Charleston and feel safer?
I don't want to walk around with a gun strapped, exposed to my, on my hip or on my shoulder, or really anywhere else. It subjects you to a lot of attention. Guns are valuable. If you've got it out there where somebody can just come and grab it, I don't know, maybe they might do that. I, I don't know, but I, I don't want, why should I not be able to put it underneath my coat?
That's not my question. My question is, is how putting that gun that you're allowed to carry today underneath your coat going to make you feel safer walking down the streets of Charleston?
Well, that's a good question you ask, but the fact is, I'm not going to wear it exposed. I, I'm just not going to do that. I just want to have the right to carry that firearm and not be subjected to that, what that exposure gives with that firearm being exposed. It's just not the same. I mean, common sense, I'd tell you.
But you would, but you would agree with me that people would be less likely to come up to you and do something to you if they saw you had an open gun on you, rather than concealed and not knowing you had the gun?
That's hard to argue with if I've got a .45 strapped to my shoulder, if they probably wouldn't come and bother me. Am I going to do that? No, I'm not.
All right, thank you, sir.
If not, thank you, Mr. Cart.
Thank you.
Committee members, are there any other questions you wish to ask to our presenters? Seeing none, we thank all of our presenters for being here today, for your presentations, as well as the written materials you gave us. A reminder that our committee will convene at 10:00 a.m. to consider this bill. And one final thing, let me just say something in hopes that will avoid some misunderstandings, but understanding that probably that's unduly optimistic. We, members of our committee get numerous emails, and often the emails say, "Please pass bill such and such," without any amendments. And frankly, ladies and gentlemen, that's really unrealistic. Our staff counsel review every bill for typographical errors, for ambiguities with the instructions to correct those things without changing the intent of the sponsor of the bill. And there's one other thing that I think is real important that is often not known or overlooked, and that is, when we change one section of the code in a bill, we're not permitted to go back and change another section in that, or another part of that same section in another bill. And in this particular case, this bill is basically aimed at Article 7 of Chapter 61, which deals with dangerous weapons. And as often happens during the legislative session, we have more than one bill that addresses that section of the code. So in this particular instance, our staff has been instructed to identify all the bills that might affect that piece of the code, and to the extent they don't do any harm to this bill, to blend them into the bill that we, we were considering, and that will give our committee the opportunity to consider all of those requests for changes to that section of the code. If they don't like it, they can strike it. And let me just give you one example, so you'll understand what I'm talking about. We had a, we had a request for a bill that would allow private schools to have their own regulations that would allow them to have armed individuals on their staff or that they hire. Currently, under the code, private as well as public schools are prohibited from having weapon, dangerous weapons in the schools with certain exceptions for law enforcement and so forth. But there are private schools in this state that do not have law enforcement, but may have someone on staff that they'll either get special training, or they may have, for instance, military training, or could even be a, a weapons instructor. So there was a request to allow an exception for private schools who, in their own policies, allow for that type of situation. Our staff has been instructed to blend that provision in with this bill, so our committee will have the opportunity to consider that. We, if we don't, if the committee doesn't like it, it will be stricken through the, from the bill by an amendment. But if we pass this bill without giving consideration to those other bills that affect the section of the code, then we can't take those up at a later time. So don't be surprised if you see. Bills that affect this same portion of the code. With that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for your attendance. We are adjourned. Again, committee, we will meet at 10:00 a.m.